Good evening. I'm curious to see the crowd we have tonight. It's nice to have some people to come on out and enjoy your time with us. My name is Peter Smith. I'm the local fire chief of the town of Acton.
I'm Senator Sager, rescue chief of the town of Acton, Acton.
We've got a little presentation tonight, probably around 35 minutes long. What we ask is if you have any questions, concerns, or comments. You can sit until the end, just to let us get through it. Or you answer some of your questions or anything, so we can sit until the end. That'd be phenomenal. We encourage questions. We might not be able to answer them, but we can definitely get you the answer if we don't know them tonight. We want questions. We want feedback. We're trying to do the right thing for the citizens of Acton. So again, we've just got a little presentation because, you know, visual is very good. It sinks in a little bit. If you talk to death, then you can be bored. So we have some videos, some clips of other places having the same problem. It's not just Acton, unfortunately. It's nationwide. So we'll do a little talking, we've got some videos of talking, we've got some videos. Okay? Starting right off, you know, the biggest thing is the volunteers. How long can you wait? We are volunteers, and we've been volunteers for a long time. Simple math on how long it takes to get out of a building sometimes. It takes me 10 minutes from the time the tone goes off, get out, get dressed, get up to the station, and I'm rolling out of the building. That's 10 minutes from where I live, and I'm one of the closer ones. Call last night, we had a fire up on Acton Ridge. I'll, I'm gonna use our department on the fireside. We had a call last night. I responded from, I was just about in the Ross Corner intersection. That's where I came from, and I was the first person to get in the fire truck. When we rolled up, we rolled up with a crew of three, but it took that long from Ross Corner. Unacceptable. But we did the best that we can as volunteer departments. So how long, how long can you wait? You know, it's up to the citizens of Acton what they would like for performance. Kind of, you know, these are just questions that you can ask yourself, ask your neighbors, ask anybody. They're very valid questions. How long can you wait for a fire truck? How long can you wait for an ambulance when you have major medical history going on? Uh, you know, how do you place your property value? We just talked about the building fire that we just had over, down over the hill. It was a trailer. Trailers burn up very quick. Everybody knows that. They're like tinderboxes. Time is of the essence. Again, we are volunteer department. We did a phenomenal job. We just had a tough time at that building because of the stuff that was in the building. Um, you know, how can you place your value on your life? It's your life. It's your child. It's your son. It's your daughter. It's very important. It's what the citizens of Acton would like to place on their life, on their own life. Typical house fires, you know, doubles in size every 60 seconds. This day and age, it's amazing how fast fire grows. Back in the good old days, when you had the good old horse hairs and furniture and stuff like that, it didn't really burn fast. It didn't really burn hot. But today, with all the new plastics, fire travels fast. It burns hotter, faster. Um, in five minutes, a trash can fire grows 1,000, wow, it's supposed to be BTU, isn't it?
Thousand feet of fire or BT ratio.
The heat of the typical room in contents fire reaches 1,100 degrees. There it is. Hot enough to make everything in that room combust in the flames. Flashover. We'll see a little video later on, and you'll see it's burning, 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 and then the room just kind of goes black. You think, oh, it just snuffed itself out. That's nuts what's happening. It's gonna flash right over. So we're gonna show you a little video at this point, and during this one-minute clip, I'm just gonna briefly tell a little history about the Acton Fire and EMS Department. Kinda let you know.
We have internet up here.
You have internet here?
Mm-hmm.
The IT guy's coming. Apologize for the modern technology.
Great until it doesn't work.
That's right. And while he's doing that, I mean, we have the same problems with new fire trucks. A new fire truck, if one component doesn't work, the whole fire truck is out of service. That is sad. Back in the olden days, we could manipulate, we could overcome, we could make things happen. It doesn't work nowadays with all the, all the standards that are out there, and the standards is what's really killing the volunteer department. All these standards are coming down from the state. Hope you don't mind Christmas music in early May here, but. The Acton Fire Department, a volunteer fire department in western York County. It was first established in 1968. Actually, my father was one of the first founders of the department way back then. Currently comprised of 37. The last public hearing I had, it was 35, so we actually gained two members, so that's, we're gaining. The Acton Ambulance Association first established in 1979, and the reason being, because the city of Sanford was no longer gonna come out and service our town because they felt that all these communities should be doing it on their own. Uh, and that is comprised of 37 members now. As of 20 are licensed, only which six licensed responders are active. Both services are 100% volunteer, and we'll see 325 to 400 call services combined alone this year. I guess I'm gonna need to talk factor. This is an estimated average of eight calls a week, though multiple calls a day are often observed, resulting in the average of 50 calls per active licensed responders per year. Each medical call takes an average three to five hours to complete. Now again, the key word here is sometimes we have several calls in a day, and then yes, there are days where we have no calls, but it's very hard when we have several calls in a day. And lately, I don't know if you noticed, it's really dry out there. Red flag day, I wanna throw that out there. No fires, no fires until we get some good rain. And we've had multiple calls. We've been on several, and every town in York County has been extremely busy this whole week. Are you gonna talk to Selma?
The golden hour takes one hour or less following traumatic energy heart attack or stroke, where the highest likelihood that prompt medical treatment will prevent death and limit long-term and longstanding effects. We are already on the short end of that. It takes us at least 20 to 25 minutes to get to the closest hospital. Um, up on the ridge, it'll take us about a half hour to 35 minutes to get to Huggins. We're gonna go to Main to Med for a heart attack or cardiac, another cardiac issue or trauma. It's gonna take us an hour to get there. So we're already on the short end of the stick. We need to reduce these times. The volunteers, for myself, you know, I live over on Wiltshire Lane. Now, I'm really close, but you take a 2:00 in the morning call, I have to get up, get out of bed, get dressed, go out to the truck, it was winter time, scrape the truck off. By the time I get to the station, again, it's, you know, seven to 10 minutes later. Those minutes are very important. We have to reduce those times. Any further delay of treatment and transport only decreases the odds of survival. The training and the education, I don't know if you guys can see up there, so I'll kind of read it off a little bit. Basic firefighter level 1-2 training, 200 hours, 1,100 plus books, that's the cost. Emergency vehicle operation course, we need that for the fire trucks and the ambulance. That's 16 hours and $200. Pump ops for the, for the fire trucks, 16 hours and $250. EMT basic training, 145 hours and $800 plus books. Actually, that price is going up. I think the last time we priced that was $850. EMT advanced is another 310 hours. EMT paramedic is 1,300 hours, and that's 9,500 plus books, plus training, plus their fuel to get there, and you know, it, it all adds up.
And that's not even including clinical time. They have to go to the hospitals and do clinical time, ride time on the ambulance, on top of those hours of just the classes alone for the EMS. The change, it's, unfortunately, everything is changing every day in the country. Um, just the facts, 95% of main departments are comprised of volunteers. It's been phenomenal for years and years and years, but as we all know, unfortunately, the volunteerism is dying, not only in the fire service, but for everything out there. Nobody has the time. Continued decline in the number of volunteer memberships have been observed over the past five years, lack of licensed personnel to the staff of ambulances. Why the decline in the volunteer, training requirements, as we mentioned before, it takes a lot of time, a lot of commitment, away from your families, your jobs, everything else. It's just so time-restrained. Um, then the continued yearly training, it's not just the initial, you have to continue to keep up all the education. It's not like a one-time thing you're done and over with. It's continued ed.
Let me touch on that real quick. Um, just a, a short blurb on the, the yearly training for the EMS side. Um, National Registry used to be a refresher class plus, I think it was 48 hours. They have upped that to a refresher class plus 72 hours. Main EMS requires, right now they require 38 hours, next year they're upping it to 52 hours. That's a lot of ti, a lot of time these members have to put in to keep their license.
Another problem is the, whoops, is the extended call times. You know, like an EMS call, with all the new protocols, it's not like you just throw the patient in the back, you fly to the hospital, drop them off, you go home. You do your report when you get a chance to do your report. It's not that anymore. The new mandates, new regulations are hurting us. Now you have to have your report in within...
24 hours.
It's, they want three hours, um, that's optimum. Uh, they want it right after the call. They'll give you up to three hours optimum. Um, 24 hours is your max. Anything over 24 hours and, you know, we start getting danged for it.
So our call time before, rush to the station, rush to the house, transfer the patient to the hospital, go home, is extended because we have to do all this extra paperwork and everything else. And plus, over the years, we've, our licenses have increased, so we can do more unseen, so you know, it just takes longer time to, to get the job done, to go home, or go back to work, or do whatever we need to do. Uh, members commuting to work, no longer work in local home, people who had to travel further to get jobs, the, uh, we used to have a lot of self-employed people. When the, when it tanked, a lot of them had to go get jobs. They wasn't self-suf, uh, sustaining themselves, so we lost a lot of those people. They work in longer hours, getting their overtime, they're getting overtime when they can. We don't have the man-hours around when we need them. Lack of time to invest, just, just can't say it enough. It's just getting tougher and tougher and tougher. So we have another little clip here, I don't know, some of you, most of you probably got TV. I guess I can say I don't have a T, well, I have a TV. I, I don't have internet, I don't have cable, so this, the first, when I saw this, you know, I don't see it on the news, so I was pretty excited, so it's, again, we just wanted to show it out for the people that probably haven't seen it. It's a little video, and again, it's just hitting home on what we're talking about. It's not just Acton.
We apologize for any commercials that may pop up.
Uh-oh, that's a long commercial.
The term busy has just taken on a whole new meaning. With Shaw Floors, we love busy. It's why we work so hard to put a resilient floor beneath your feet that's as awesome as you are.
Our business is hard surface flooring. Visit us to see the possibilities at Floor Systems, Route 196, Lisbon.
Fire chief in Hollis says with more resources and a larger staff, this house could have been spared from last night's devastating fire. Seven people are now homeless after the fire, which investigators blamed on a backed-up pellet stove. WMTW News 8's Shurnay Williams is live with more on this ongoing problem, a shortage of volunteer firefighters. Shurnay.
And Steve, I'm in front of the Alfred Fire Department right now. That's one of several departments in the area that depend on volunteer firefighters, and as I learned in a meeting of fire chiefs tonight, this shortage is affecting everyone. This home in Hollis, now a total loss after a stove fire. Crews from about a dozen nearby fire departments responded to help, as because Hollis had only three firefighters working, including fire chief Jason Johnson.
With everybody working, you know, more than one job in the day that we live in, um, it's very difficult to get any type of, you know, call force members to a call during the daytime.
His department is almost entirely made up of volunteers, but he says fewer people are signing up.
It's getting pretty scary, just because it is a standard thing. The stressful part is, um, really the feeling that you, you can't do more because you don't have the staffing there.
It's a national organization.
At a meeting of the York County Firefighters Association tonight, fire chiefs from several departments are talking recruitment.
It's a topic that, uh, that we discuss quite a bit.
Vice president of the association, Roger Hooper, says the length of training has also increased to about 200 hours, which some volunteers with jobs or families might not have time for. Plus, the job is becoming more demanding.
When I first started doing this in 1980, my department went on 60 calls that year. Last year, my fire department broke 700 calls.
He says the answer might lie in junior volunteer and EMS training. These high schoolers are in the first class.
People really don't wanna do the work, volunteer work anymore without getting paid. I don't know why. I mean, you're giving back to the community, you're helping, it's a good thing.
Hooper also says it's time more small-town firefighters get paid.
We need to hire people. We need to create jobs in the fire department and put people on duty in the fire station.
Now, Hooper says, of course, it would cost money for communities to hire firefighters, but there is some federal funding available. Live in Alfred, Shurnay Williams, WMTW News 8.
Uh, what's the next slide? I just mentioned something real quick, but she mentioned federal funding. Um, just FYI, that's pretty hard to get.
Everybody's trying to go for it.
Everyone's going for it, uh, we've gone for it. It's very hard to get federal funding.
Oh, what's the next one after that? Uh, well, for staffing, I'll just mention on some of the, um, the original place she was in, Alfred. Alfred does have some staffing going on there, they have full-time people working there, and they also rely on volunteers. We're not saying the volunteers are going away. We definitely need the volunteers. All we're saying, all we're trying to promote is, and I'm probably trying to jump ahead, maybe not, I don't know, but again, it's the first initial response. You know, that's what counts. We're gonna need still a lot of people at a lot of calls. It's just, you know, we still need the volunteers. We're just trying to make it quicker, safer, more economic, and the best we can for the citizens of Acton. This is what we're trying to do tonight. So pros of staffing, obviously, there's several different things. Having a 24/7, 365 days a year, licensed, cross-trained, provides the on-duty with the same time, faster response time for both fire and EMS, um, more experienced crews because, you know, they're working all the time. They're going to all these calls, and the volunteers are still gonna be coming out, but they're sporadic. I have it broken down in call, uh, call numbers for like 1 to 10, how many show up? 11 to 20, how many show up? And it, it dies right down as it gets going on. I think the 1 to 10 calls, we have 16 people that make 1 to 10 calls a year. That's excellent for the 10 calls that they go to, but for the rest of them, it just gets harder and harder for the, the volunteers, the very few that are dedicated to try to do the best they can at all the calls they can. Um, you know, the aggressive maintenance, that's huge. It's very tough. I'm having a hard enough time to get my people to come out to handle the calls, never mind the maintenance that we have to do and keep up with, the hose testing and all the testing we do, keeping the equipment clean, SEBA tests, it's all mandated stuff that we have to do, and I'm asking volunteer people to come out to do that. It's, it's tough. So with the on-duty staff, so they're not gonna be up there just sitting at the station. They got a lot of work that needs to be done and will be done. So instead of prolonging this, I mean, I'm sure you had more time to read as we go, so we'll try to keep going forward. Yeah, sure, we'll do another quick video. I think we've, we, uh... Everybody here see the Limerick Fire one? We showed that last time. No? All right, yeah, go ahead.
Bill Dodge Nissan has what you're looking for. It's simple. You want the best dealer rate.
And we have a brand-new facility jam-packed with Nissan inventory. It means best price on a new Nissan.
Steve McLean is literally a one-man fire department.
Last year, there was 200 rescue calls I went to and a little over 100 fire calls.
He has several fire trucks in his shop and on his property, as his business is selling plow's parts and fire equipment. But McLean is also a volunteer on the Limerick Fire Department.
The more calls you have, the more people you need. You know, it's exhausting some days to go run out the three calls.
He says a lot has changed in his 38 years helping his neighbors with increased training and calls, reducing the number of people willing and able to pitch in.
With 400 calls that we had this year, we only have right now four actual licensed medical people. Well, that's a lot of calls for four volunteers.
He says when folks are at work, there are even fewer people able to respond.
Sometimes we don't have anybody. There's certain days of the week where it's hard to rely on anybody. We compensate for that by listening for a tone, and if it's something critical, relying on the neighboring towns to come and assist.
To make sure someone shows up, Limerick and other small-town departments are turning to larger departments to provide services.
No, we can't keep going the way it is because there was an instance a month ago where we didn't have any medical people in town, and we had three calls during that day, all of which Waterboro thankfully covered for us. But it's gotten to the point where we're relying on them way too much, and it's costing them a lot of money.
Most every fire department in Maine is called upon from time to time to help their neighbors in their time of need. Sometimes it's when a structure fires beyond their capability, or if they have two incidents going on in their town at the same time. It's known as a mutual aid agreement, and it's supposed to be reciprocal.
We have always had mutual agreements with our surrounding communities.
Waterboro fire chief Matthew Boers estimates 100 of the nearly 1,000 calls his department responded to last year were for help outside of his community.
It certainly is an impact to our community, with no question that the taxpayers of Waterboro have taken the initiative to fund, to have adequate coverage.
It got to the point where he met with Limerick's chief to see if there was a way to lessen the burden.
What is that balance in, in the service that we're providing to be able to make it affordable to the resident?
Chief Boers is quick to point out that when Waterboro calls for assistance, the few folks Limerick can muster are always there to return the favor.
They're able to pull the truck together when we need them to, and they know, you know, it's, it means a lot to them, and we've respected the relationship we've had with them.
With the volume of calls increasing all the time, at some point it snaps, and that's gonna be a terrible day when we just can't get a rescue to somebody.
Members of Limerick Fire and Rescue have been circulating a petition requesting residents vote on adding some per diem staffing.
We really don't have a choice out here, except that we should put some per diem people on to offset that.
And while Steve McLean says paid members working dedicated shifts will not fix all their problems...
Essentially, it is regional out here because none of these small towns can do it themselves.
He believes if each town does its part, they'll be better equipped to answer the call for help, no matter who's calling and from where. In Limerick, Tim Goff, News Center.
On that, chief Boers, hit it right on the nail, uh, hit the nail right on the head. You know, it's a balance for what we can do for our community. We're not asking staffing 10 people, we're just asking the minimal of what it takes to get an EMS truck out and actually handle a call. A minimal to get a fire truck out and actually handle a relatively reasonable call. And then, um, McLean, I don't know, that's coming, I wanna say from McLean. But they both had very valid points, and again, we're just trying to hit that, you know, hit that right on the head. Yep, look at that one. You know, about the volunteers, the active fire rescue recognizes the volunteers are the backbone, and they're always going to be the backbone. The volunteers, I'm hoping, will never go away, but they will never be pushed away by me. No way. I'm, you know, the promotion, promotion of the volunteers is still gonna be there and will be needed, because they're just as vital and not more important than the staffing that we'll be having there. Um, you know, duty crews and volunteers are working combined to achieve the goals with the 24/7 staffing at the active fire rescue. Uh, we'll be combined, paid, call force, and how, you know, we work this out. You know, the whole objective is just to handle the calls and, um, efficiency, early and efficiency. Uh, volunteers will experience better training with the need for the less focus on maintenance of equipment. That's what I kind of touched on earlier, because all the maintenance will be taken care of by the duty crew, so the volunteer time that they wanna volunteer and they're able to volunteer, they can actually train, and train and learn and be proficient and go forward. And with the duty crew up there, they can actually train with them during days. You know, most of our training time is at night. We do the best we can, people work at night, so those poor people have a hard time getting the training value that some of the rest of us have. So with the duty crew up there, the training will be much more up the snuff, up to par, and much more convenient for the people that can't make it during our training nights. Wanna talk for a while? Okay? Guess you're stuck with my voice for a little longer. Uh, why now? Uh, as said in previous presentations, the active fire is a, is at a pivotal time as the surrounding areas for emergency services. The volume of calls, the lack of memberships, uh, is particular to the lack of licensed responders to be able to staff the ambulance or fire truck at all hours of the day, have finally reached the point outside of the department's ability to resource and manage emergency response effectively. We still do it, but in my opinion, it's not effectively, and that's the whole thing for the safety of the citizens of my town. The Acton Fire and Ambulance Association acknowledges the, uh, the burden of fall, uh, falls upon the town and the citizens. There is no denying that money will be spent. It is in the active fire's interest to help facilitate how that money is expended and ensures the town of Acton and its citizens, commuters, and patrons receive the best quality of service possible and the lowest financial impact feasible. Again, what we're looking for is not gonna solve all the problems, but we are looking to solve or advance and give much more back to our citizens at a much quicker time. Why Acton? Well, uh, Geol, uh, Acton geographically sits in a very powerful location that will grant the ability to project our service to not only our community, but to our neighboring towns. It also face, uh, it also faces the same issues that we do. Um, when it comes to staffing, answering the calls of service, this undoubtedly will further increase the call volume of Acton, rescue and fire, and turn increasing revenue seen through billing. If they know that they're, we're there, they're gonna be calling us more. It's a known fact. Back years ago, we had a hand-in-fund given to us, we did per diem staffing back there with his money, and the call volumes jumped because people, you know, they knew they're there, they didn't wanna burden us. You know, we have a small community, and everybody realized we are volunteers, so some of them take it to heart, it's like, ugh, I should call them, but I don't wanna bother them. We have that so often. We go to a heart attack at night, we, we, we go at 5:00 in the morning, which is like one of our worst times because people are getting ready for work. If they call us at midnight, it'd be, it'd be better, because, you know, we got time to get them, take them, transport them, get home. Well, I didn't wanna bother you, you guys are sleeping. No, that's, that's unacceptable. We're here for you, and we're doing the best we can for you. You call us when you need us. That's the whole idea of having the emergency service. Uh, we're very fortunate to have the equipment and the facility to do this staffing, unlike some other towns, uh, their building's not up to par for staffing for overnight, so a lot of them are doing some daylight, uh, daylight, daytime staffing. And again, you know, that's great, but at night, what happens at night? There are some times you're still not getting out. We want to do the best we can for our citizens 24/7, 365 days a year. At a minimal cost, yes, it's expensive, but what, again, it's taking two people to roll an ambulance to efficiently, you, you, one person can't pick up a patient, work a patient, and drive the ambulance at the same time. It's, it's, well, in the old days, we used to, but I mean, that was a long time ago. This day and age, we cannot do that, so...
And that's a minimum of two people. Um, in, in our town especially, a lot of times, we need a lot more than two people just because, you know, the houses are older, they have the steep steps, you know, maybe down over the hill, you know, and, and for two people to try to carry a patient down those steps, up the hill, it, it's dangerous. So we actually even need more people than two, but at least two on that ambulance, to get that ambulance out the door.
For the immediate patient care, yes, again, we're promoting the need of the volunteers. We still need the volunteers. Yeah, grab another video real quick, if you could. Uh, do the New Hampshire one, yeah. Still not doing too bad for time.
There are concerns...
You wanna make an iPhone out? If so, give me the 30 more seconds of the time. If not, go.
Heather Hamel takes a look at the struggles small towns are facing.
Flames raging, the alarm sounds, and firefighters are called to duty.
Tone goes off. I'm always listening, who's responding, who's the first person responding, and it's a little discouraging when no one is responding, or just maybe one person.
A reality for fire departments across the state and even the country. There's a shortage of volunteers manning these departments.
There is no one that stays at the station. We have some retired guys that come here and help clean up and whatnot, but, uh, we're, we're all at work all day long.
Andover's fire department is solely volunteer. A year ago, they merged with East Andover. It has helped with management. Manpower, however, is still a concern. They get about 120 medical calls and 40 for fire each year, plus they help others with mutual aid. They benefit from that as well, but it's still challenging.[1779.65] They benefit from that as well, but it's still challenging.
To the nearest town, we're 10 to 15 minutes away. So time is definitely our enemy.
Fires back when I first started would double in size every 10 minutes. Now they double in size every minute because of the new materials. So yeah, it burns much faster, much hotter, it's much more dangerous.
Belmont Fire Chief David Parenti says the lack of volunteers affects response time, and it's rare to have the full number of people needed for a call.
There's all these regulations that say you have to have two people outside in order to put two people inside. You have to have, uh, 18 people in order to initiate a fire attack. Well, when we have two people on duty and maybe three call firefighters coming back, we do what we can do. It's tough. To get the number of people that we need to a scene, I would say probably if we're lucky, maybe 5% of the time, we actually have the full number we need.
Belmont is a combination department with nine full-timers and 20 call firefighters, responding to 1,200 calls a year. Much different than the chief's first job in upstate New York in the late '70s.
If we had a major fire during the day, we place one call to our dispatch center. They would call IBM and say, "We have a, you know, Enwell has a fire. Could you release the people?" They'd release them. Now if we call and say, "We have a fire," they go, "Yes, that's not our problem."
The majority of the people are not working in the town that they live in. The other part is the demands on the family have increased so much.
I went from being a very active 300-hour-a-year-plus member to I'm lucky if I can get 10 hours a month because of my family commitments now.
Lieutenant James Gerard says it's a juggling act. He works at three New Hampshire fire departments and also has to keep his training up to speed.
If it's something you really love and enjoy and you want to do it, you figure it out. That's what it's all it is, is time management.
But not everyone feels that way. State Fire Marshal Bill Degnan says over the last decade, the number of volunteers has dropped drastically.
As the need increases for fire services and they don't have the volunteers, then they have voted to put on full-time firefighters. And that's an expense to the community.
But volunteer expenses can add up, too. Each set of turnout gear runs about $3,000. Then there's workers' compensation and training fees.
We spend a lot of time and effort training people for other departments. Then, young people will join the fire department, become trained, and move away.
Some departments have partnered with high schools who offer firefighter training. At 18, they can volunteer, and some college students are live-in volunteers during the school year, but they still need more help.
We don't pay them. Their incentive has to be one of community, one of camaraderie, one that they like doing it.
Last week, the fire marshal met with New Hampshire's congressional delegation and has asked for a volunteer tax incentive plan. Basically, if you volunteer as a firefighter, you get a tax incentive for it. He says Congresswoman Annie Custer has agreed to help get this bill moved forward. Reporting in the studio, Heather Hamel, WMUR, News 9.
So again, unfortunately, it sounds like a broken record, but it's out there everywhere, even in New Hampshire. Um, I'll go to the last one, just see if anybody has any questions, and we'll do that last if people seem to want to sit down here. So while looking back, you know, from the very beginning, you know, could you wait for an ambulance or a fire truck? How much do you value your property? How much do you value your life? You know, early estimates based of the, um...
Of a home value of $180,000?
You know, $163 a year. This is the numbers that we've been given. I didn't magically come up with these, so, you know, again, it's what you think is the value for your property and life. Like I mentioned in the beginning, I chose not to have cable TV. I don't, it's a waste of money for me. I don't believe in it. I don't have internet. I do it at work, you know? I don't need to go on Facebook. I don't do that stuff. So I don't spend that kind of money. I spend my money in other things. That's what I choose to do, and I'd rather spend it towards this. This is my personal opinion.
As for myself, basically, you know, I got a family. I got two small children. I have a husband. I have an older daughter. I have other family in the community. And, you know, $163 a year, you know, it's worth it to me. You know, I want to keep my family safe. I want to keep you guys safe. You know, my goal all along as a chief has always been life safety for the community. We have to got to get the patient care out there.
So I guess if we have any questions you want to ask him, we got one more video. It's an NFPA standard video, and I think it's eight minutes long. We'll shoot that real quick and, yeah, go for it.
Do you want to, uh, keep on the throne before we start the video, just what NFPA is?
Oh, you scored ahead.
NFPA is the National Fire Protection, uh, Prevention Association. They pretty much dictate to fire services, municipalities, how you will do X, Y, Z when it comes to a fire, when it comes to a rescue. Their guidelines to safely allow us to do our job, basically, give us kind of a roadmap, a roadmap or a flow chart to, you know, from start to finish, this is what you're gonna need to do the job and this is how it should be done. Uh, there's also OSHA that we work with, the same, there's a few agencies that oversee us. But NFPA is a very big powerhouse in both the fire service and the rescue service.
NFPA 1710 sets forth in concise terms the resource requirements for fires, emergencies, and other incidents.
The first strategy is life safety, since that's our number-one goal. What do we need first that will have the greatest effect on saving lives? Secondly, the strategy is then how do we stabilize this incident? How do we control the fire? How do we confine the fire? Keep the fire from spreading in that building and keep it from spreading to adjacent buildings?
I'm on a truck company, so I'm in charge of forcible entry. So I'm trying to force entry, and the other guys are on the roof trying to ventilate while someone else is trying to turn off the utilities, while somebody else is breaking windows. It's really, uh, a lot of things going on, and it all has to go on at the same time. Then you have the engine companies there, ready to go in and put water on, and you have your rescue squads there, ready to go in and look for victims, or hopefully save someone.
We need to have the right amount of apparatus, equipment, meaning the tools that come off that apparatus, and the personnel so that we can simultaneously attack the fire, ventilate the fire, do search and rescue operations, and provide for a water supply and have a rapid intervention team.
With four members on the crew, the officer isn't tied to just the hose line. You can get out, take a look, get a visual, get around the structure, get back and give some specific directions on where the members need to go and see what's going on inside the building.
At an accident scene, he can step ahead of the problem. He can anticipate the tasks. If it's just him and a firefighter, he just moves from task to task.
Response time and minimum staffing are equally important when we roll emergency medical services.
A lot of what we do is driven by time, by our ability to get there in a certain amount of time. And then when we do get there, to have the right number of people who are correctly trained and appropriately equipped to take the situation and improve it. You're talking about timeframes that sometimes are within a minute. By having more people, you enhance your ability to control the unknown and the uncertainty of the out-of-hospital environment, such that you defeat, if you will, this time variable that we work against. If we don't have the right number of people there doing the right thing in the right amount of time, things don't improve. Things get worse. People are injured or people die.
Response times are critical in both fire and EMS calls for help, where an on-scene maximum of three to four minutes means a fire can be attacked before it is out of control, and a heart and cardiac arrest can receive CPR and defibrillation before the occurrence of brain death. NFPA 1710 sets the minimum number of personnel needed to effectively meet these time-critical emergencies. It is a scientific standard, and it is a matter of life.
For the first time in our history, we have a document that will help us determine the amount of equipment we need at emergency scenes, the amount of personnel we need to adequately protect our community. NFPA 1710 will prove to be the most important document for the future of the fire service.
It's no longer an opinion, it's a matter of fact. It gives us, and the community and administrators, a foundation of what is properly needed to address the concerns of whether it's a medical emergency or a fire incident.
Even though the citizens might know the dynamics of 1710, we as firefighters know on the front lines that this is the only protection that they have. So it's up to us to ensure that 1710 is enacted and is put in place so that we can properly protect the citizens we serve.
Much as we'd like to think that every risk event is new and different, that they aren't. And particularly when we're talking about an organization like a fire department, there's a history of things that could go wrong. And once you have a standard that helps you prepare to respond to those things that happen, you can have a lot more confidence that they're gonna do it right over and over again. And as a community, by implementing NFPA 1710, you are acting to minimize the consequences of an adverse event.
If a community decides not to comply with 1710, they are deciding to accept the adverse risk situations that come along with having a unprepared emergency response system. And by these consequences, I mean loss of life, loss of property, and in some cases, catastrophic losses of taxpayers.
My office, together with the city council, began evaluating much-needed improvements in our city's emergency response system. And our decisions for change were based primarily on the requirements in the NFPA 1710 standard. In August, voters approved a ballot measure that ensured we could get the job done. But more importantly, because of 1710, Kansas City will provide a more effective, efficient, and safer system to respond to all emergencies.
Here in Kansas City, we know the standard is in effect now, but we have a long way to go before we will be in compliance with 1710. So currently, we're in the process, through a labor-management partnership, of creating a five-year strategic phase in and implementation of our services.
The fire service has become the all-threat responder. The fire service has become the default responder for most of the natural or man-made problems that occur in our society. We need to do whatever we can to ensure that appropriately-trained people are as widely dispersed and as quickly available as possible. Forty years ago, you called the ambulance and you waited and you took your chances. Today, you call, you expect prompt, professional, efficient service, and you expect to live.
I guess we assume and expect that we will get protection and it will come quickly and that people will be trained. Fire is extraordinarily intrusive on everything. I mean, it's frightening even to think back on it. I didn't have a healthy enough appreciation for what fire does to the premises and to the spirit.
If you know there's a victim, if you know there's a child, you've got to be aggressive right then, and you've got to be able to find out where that person is. Without adequate staffing, the problems and dynamics of the fire ground are more in control.
There's just so much that has to be done, and that's why having enough staff and having a well-trained staff is so vital to the operation.
Well, our goal every day we go to work is that everybody return home safely to their family. And with adequate staffing levels, that gives us a tool that we can do that.
It's priceless. I mean, there's, I think about my daughter, you know, standing there, not knowing whether I'm going to live or die. Everything that happens after that, after that time, is, in a way, a result of the fact that the emergency personnel were there to save me. And I don't think you can measure the whole rest of the life.
We should do everything we can to protect the public against foreseeable risk. So they should adopt the standard, give the fire departments whatever it is they need to do it right, because it'll save money in the long run and it'll save lives, too. Eventually, it'll become the minimum standard, and maybe even cities that do not adopt it could be sued for not adopting it. But I just think it's the right thing to do, to do the best that we can to help people avoid death, injury, and destruction from fire or any other cause, because it does happen. And I used to think it couldn't happen to me, but it could, and it did. And it can happen to you. It can happen to anybody.
If it's a matter of life this time, will your fire department be ready?
I just want to say that page went off. That's not for Acton, that was for Wakefield, so we're still good. I guess just to hit on a couple of things, you know, no matter how much staffing you have, you're never gonna have enough, but what we're trying to do is get that next huge jump up for the citizens of Acton. That's what we're trying to do. Uh, I think we're like the only career out there that actually works our butt off to put ourselves out of a job. Unfortunately, there's a lot of stuff that goes on that's gonna keep us very busy. It's just the nature of the beast, unfortunately. Some of the things that could help us out and help the citizens out tremendously would be sprinkler systems. Sprinkler systems are really cheap when you're building a new house. We can't promote that enough. I know we've got, you know, we've been trying to push for standards in the town of Acton. We have them in certain developments, but anybody building a house, you know, it's cheap money to put a sprinkler system in. It could save your life. That's what it's all about.
Another thing you can do is learn CPR. That's another thing that can save a life, because early CPR saves lives.
Smoke detectors. Get your smoke detectors in your house. Check them. Change your batteries, carbon dioxide. All very important tools out there for the citizens to, you know, that they can do for themselves. You've just got to take the initiative to do it. You know, we're gonna come out, we'll be out there helping you, educating you, help you and assist you in any way we can with anything. We just need to be asked, you know? And that's what we're just trying to do. Sanford, just to touch on the Sanford bit again. Sanford is starting, well, supposedly starting of July 1st. They haven't given me in writing yet, unfortunately for me, but fortunately for the chief of Sanford, he's been on vacation in Europe. So he's, I'm hoping he's having a really good time out there, enjoying his vacation because he really deserves it. He's a hard-working fire chief down in Sanford. He's made some good changes and going forward there. But it's a $2,000 bill when Sanford has to come out to take care of our citizens, our own citizens in our own community, if our ambulance doesn't leave the building because our people can't or unable to get out and staff the ambulance. So, yeah, I guess we could say we're paying the $2,000, but, you know, as me being a fire chief in Acton, trying to be responsible for my citizens in my town, the $2,000, I think, would be much more invested to keep it in our own community, to keep our building staffed with both fire and EMS. That's another point I want to touch on. In this community, it's going to be staffed as fire and EMS. So no matter what kind of call comes out, emergency call, that call is gonna be handled. Unlike some of the communities around, they're doing better. They're staffing, but they're staffing EMS only. That's great for EMS calls, but it's not helping you out for fire calls or other emergency calls. So we're trying to do, again, the best that we can, the best of the best, with some financial burden on the taxpayers. We get it, we understand it, and that's why we're trying to throw it out to the taxpayers. It's up to the taxpayers of what they are acceptable within our town. I'm telling you as a fire chief, I don't feel comfortable where we're at right now. I want to do better. You have anything you want to say? Questions? Concerns? Comments?
Pete, can you guys come and use these microphones here and let them come up so that, so when it gets on the video, they can hear what the questions are? If anybody has any questions for the chiefs, come on up, please. State your name and, no, no questions?
Well...
Come on right up here.
I have a bunch of questions.
What's that?
I have a bunch of questions.
Sure.
Hey, Jack Rogan, live on San Bone Road. Um, I don't know, am I supposed to face this way or that way?
You can throw it if you want.
Okay. Uh, Pete, you saying the $163, is that per household? The fire and EMS?
That's a $180,000 roughly-valued house. So we have million-dollar houses in Acton, and we have probably...
No, do we have a figure, like, per house, what it's gonna cost per year?
It's per house.
I do. Um, on a $180,000 property, your taxes just for the, for this, um, the ambulance coming on will be $99 increase, which is 55 cents per thousand.
Oh, so it's based on the property value?
Exactly.
When people get charged.
Yeah, well, the taxes will increase by 55 cents. Um, we were at, um, for 2014, we were at $11.10. So if we add on, the fire department will be adding on 55 cents per thousand, so that'll be $11.65 per thousand. So on a $180,000 property, it'll cost you individually $99 more.
That's not bad. All right, so what's the plan for the fire department? Are you saying you're gonna have like three people at the station at all times, so it's like two? Because you need a minimum of two to take the ambulance.
Yeah, our goal is...
I'm saying, are you looking to have just a minimum of two or a minimum of three people at the station? And how are the hours gonna work?
Our goal is two people 24/7, seven days a week, 365 days a year. As far as the hours work, that's all stuff that still needs to be worked out, if they're gonna work 12-hour shifts, 24-hour shifts. But the goal is to have two people up in the building all the time.
Yeah, but is it gonna be per diem or are they gonna be like a salaried hourly?
We're looking for some salary, hourly people, only because, you know, the, it's consistency that's going on. If you did everybody per diem, then everybody coming up have their own personal agenda, and I don't want that. I want some good consistency going on in the department and filling in with per diem. So... So we're looking to try to staff one member full-time with career people and the other person all per diem. That's what we're looking at, for the two coverage.
For the two, all right.
Yeah, so one person 24/7, seven days a week, 365 days a week...
So they can go back all the time?
Will be a career person, and then the other 24/7, 365 days, will be filled by a per diem shift person.
No, I guess I'm confused on the back and forth. You're saying they're going to be an EMT, so they can do fire or the ambulance?
Yep, and that's the other good reason, I'm trying to have the full-time staff, the career person is going to be fire and EMS. So no matter what, when a per diem person comes in, if they're only EMS, because we don't want to shove out our volunteers, they put a lot of time and energy in, I want them to be working shifts as well. So if it's an EMT, no matter what, both jobs are going to get done, because the EMT can assist the firefighter.
Right.
With the career person being fire and EMS, if it's just a firefighter person coming in, the job can get done, they can help the EMS side doing. So yes.
Okay. All right, now, are we going to have paramedics in the town as well, or is it just going to be a basic?
Well, again, it's going to go through a hiring process for the full-time staffing, and we're shooting high. But if nobody's coming in the paramedic level, then we're going to go where we're going to go, incentive, give incentive to our persons, and then get them paramedic down the road. It's going to take time. Per diem people, we have some per diems, yep, they want to come in, they're paramedic, plus-plus for us, yes.
All right, do we have paramedics in the town now?
We have a couple.
Yes, we do.
We have two active, Harold and another member, Sharon, and then we have three that are affiliate members. Basically, the affiliate members, what happens is they're employed by another department, so we don't have to pay for any of their trainings or anything. They come in, and if they're in town, when they're in town, they go on calls for us. So they cost us nothing.
And the affiliates generally don't live in town, they live elsewhere, and they just come in and help when they can.
All right, let me just throw it a, I don't know how to word this. Well, let's just say we go for a 24-hour shift. Is it, are we going to have, I guess my question is health insurance, too, is part of the, we're going to, obviously, is this going to be a town job, we're going to provide them, like, town benefits?
Yes.
Okay.
Not all of them, just the career people.
Just the career people?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll answer that. We will have to go out, there'll be a municipal job, we'll have to advertise and go through an interview process. And in the figure that they have given us to put forward includes medical insurance at the highest cost, in case somebody comes in and has a full family. And that's for the 324-hour people. The people that are working on per diem will not be getting health insurance.
Okay, I guess I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Good comments. Yes, sir.
I'm Dr. William Williams, live on Sunset. I think that the volunteers who gave the presentation are fantastic people and are able to do a tremendous amount of good with the resources that they have. As a starter, I want to say that.
Doctor, could you speak into the mic, she can't really hear you?
You do a great job. And it's fantastic what you have been able to accomplish with such poor resources available to you. But as the film showed, this whole process with little towns is eventually unsustainable. There are going to be more federal requirements, more state requirements, more training requirements, more equipment requirements, and we are never, I mean, if Kansas City can't do it, Acton can't do it.
Correct.
Okay? I guess my question at this point is, I think that this whole idea that the selectmen have chosen is excellent, because it provides a bridge. It provides a bridge to get it under municipal control, because right now, if you don't know, the rescue EMS portion of this is not a part of the city government. And so it has to be in order for us to begin looking at other towns in this end of York County to perhaps work out even a better arrangement for the future of us all. My wife tells me, you know, you live in Acton because it's a beautiful area, and it's very picturesque, and if you don't have good ambulance service, that's just one of the things that is a negative. I don't look at it that way. As a physician, I know that the requirements for treatment for, say, an ST, elevated myocardial infarction, heart attack, means that when they get to the door of the emergency room, you've got 90 minutes to get them diagnosed, get them up to the cath lab, and get that clot dissolved. 90 minutes. And after that, the hospital gets dinged, and the feds come in and start investigating if all of your myocardial infarctions of that type are not handled quickly. Strokes are now going to be four hours. You've got four hours to perhaps get some of the neurological deficit back after the stroke starts. And if we had even 24/7, 365 ambulance service, it's been pointed out, to get to a tertiary care center, such as in Portland, sometimes takes over an hour and a half, right, just for the trip.
The trip is an hour, an hour and a half, including travel time to the scene, loading the patient.
Correct. So we're really already compromising potentially a good outcome for certain medical situations. So again, my urging would be that the selectmen have taken this on very carefully. They know what they're doing. This is a great bridging piece of legislation that they're asking us as town members to agree to. It will allow the ambulance service to be now under the wing of the city government, of the town government. And my only suggestion at this point in time is I would beg the selectmen, as a part of this, hoping that this is approved, to set up a committee to begin the real diligent investigation of being able to share fire, as well as ambulance services, with other towns at this end of York County. It may also, we should make the county look at providing us with a training center, both for EMS as well as for firefighters, so that these people can be credentialed and re-credentialed without having to pay out of their own pockets. That's the least that York County ought to be able to do, and we ought to start really raising a great deal of fear about it. Other things include perhaps more reliance on helicopters and helicopter service. When there are certain diagnoses that are made, being able to get the people out here in Acton, to get them to be able to make a diagnosis, let's say, for example, of a heart attack, and begin therapy en route to a tertiary hospital, so that time is not lost. Perhaps even looking to see if there are hospitals closer than Portland across the state line in New Hampshire that we might be able to work with in terms of getting people to hospitals more quickly. But I think this is a great start, and I would just urge and hope that the voters go along with the suggestions of the selectmen and as a basis, so that we can go ahead in the future. Because it's not going to be much longer, and they're going to have to come back for more money. And you can't get 20 little towns in York County, Maine, up to the standards that are going to be insisted upon by many people and required by government. As I said, if Kansas City can't do it, Acton can't do it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If I could clear up a couple of things. This has been an ongoing question for many years, even before this board was, were a selectman. Started with a study that was done that was paid by the ambulance association and the town, correct?
And the fire.
Yeah, and the fire department, too. And it's been ongoing, and every year since I've been a selectman, the ambulance board has come forward and asked us to put this question forward. And the selectmen have not felt that they were ready. And most of the time, it was because of the committee that was involved with the ambulance at the time was not coming together as a full committee and coming to the selectmen and saying, "We want this question to be put forward." This new board that's running the ambulance association now has done all the work that they need to do to make it a viable transfer from a nonprofit into a town department. So that's why the selectmen are bringing this question forward this year, because it is possible, should the town decide that this is what they want to do for the ambulance association, to turn over their property and their ambulance and their building and their funds to the town to help us run the ambulance association. That has not been available up until now. This is the first year that's been available. So that's why we're putting the question on the town floor this year, is because that, come on back up here, that's why we're putting that question on the floor this year, is because we feel that they have done their work, and they're ready to move on and become part of the town, and hopefully, it'll make response a lot better.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's also going to help us if we do decide to really start pushing with cooperation with other towns. For example, sharply, as I understand it, have both their rescue and their fire department under town government control. It's going to be easier to perhaps start looking at ways in which we can share and amalgamate services. Is that not true?
Well, they're still doing it differently than what they're proposing, what the fire and the ambulance are proposing this year. But we have talked to them, we have invited them to the meetings, but they have, because their meeting is in March, they've gone ahead of us as far as their plan. And they're trying something out, and if it doesn't work, I'm sure we'll be able to sit down and talk with them, because we are already sharing a deputy with them. So it's our hopes that eventually, once we're up and running, that they'd be willing to join in with us also.
It would be more difficult if we had the ambulance service remaining as a nonprofit corporation, though. Is that not true?
Right. It wouldn't be possible. It wouldn't be possible.
Yes, it's an important first step.
Any other questions?
Um, sure.
Yeah, anybody has any questions, just come right up to the mic.
Make them easy questions, Tom.
They're not going to be questions, just a few comments. I'm a member of the Warrant and Finance Committee, as most of you know, and my job here is to help guide the considerations of the town meeting as we move forward. I do not have any problem with the goals that these folks have expressed. In fact, I'm in favor of them. I do want to address, though, something that is coming before you in the very near future, specifically, Article Six of the proposed warrant, it's not final yet, I have to say that, is to appear on a ballot as a ballot initiative. And the article is, as it exists now, "Shall a town vote to accept the transfer of all assets of the Acton Ambulance Association to the town and provide ambulance service and firefighter service under one municipal department," et cetera. It's going to happen, probably, and that's probably a good thing. I don't have a problem with that. I do have...
It's subject to a budget being passed at the town meeting.
Right, that's subject to a budget being passed at the town meeting, so let's clarify that. But that's the only exception there, all right? And this is what I would like to address. The issues involved in bringing the association into the government, into the town government, are reasonably complicated, okay? And the two things that I want to bring to your attention right now that are of great concern to me as a member of Warrant and Finance are, one, there is no known audit of this association in the 35 years of its existence, okay? That's a huge concern to me, because we have nothing on paper that says how the operation was managed and the complications for that. When you bring that into the government, could encumber the town significantly. So an audit has to be done. And I will go into a few of those details if you'd like me to. I will provide the selectmen with copies of what my concerns are, and I've shared them at Warrant and Finance, and will continue to do so. The other issue that is of huge concern to me is the fact that there's no plan for the integration of these two organizations together. The chairman referred a few minutes ago to a report that was done with the cooperation, the Acton Ambulance Association and the selectmen. And most of that plan really is, what should I say? It's no longer applicable, it's outgrown, it was done in 2009. I would like to quote from a very special portion of that plan, though, and it goes on as follows, the following is accepted from that report. "The recommendation is essential to implement the consolidation of fire and rescue services. The merging must be a methodical process with all the groundwork laid out in advance. The members of the two groups, who have high stakes in the outcome, must play a significant part in the redesign of the system. Everyone involved must also understand that the finished plan must be endorsed by the town." It goes on to say, "By engaging in a comprehensive planning process that includes the key stakeholders, the town will develop a better understanding of the current situation and create an opportunity to decide the future of the emergency services enacted. The process will be an opportunity for self-evaluation. The planning process will enable a town to identify gaps in the needed resources, to predict with some reliability its resources needed in the future, and to design a system that meets both the current and future requirements. Following a structured plan, planning model designed for the fire and rescue agency, the town will create a framework for emergency services, for emergency service resources, resource deployment. The fire-rescue committee convened in last summer's..." That refers to a committee that was in existence for a short period of time, it just says it was a positive step. My point here is, if we're voting for this Article Six, as it has been proposed, I think we're jumping the gun. We need an ordinance. The fire and rescue service needs to be an ordinance, that's what this is talking about, bringing the two together that describes the jobs of these people, the responsibilities, the authorities they have, who hires, who fires, who supervises. All that has to be woven together before we bring this together. Otherwise, we're going to end up in a mess that Lebanon is in, okay? Let me just go back for a minute and touch on a few of the concerns I have with respect to accepting the, quote, "assets" of the Acton Rescue before we go through the audit process.
Tom, can I interrupt just for a minute?
Yes, ma'am. Excuse me.
Just out of respect for other departments, can we not...
I'm sorry, yes, I apologize.
All right, thank you.
Very good point, okay. All right. Again, let me say that the association, to the best of my knowledge and the best of knowledge of anybody here, has never had an audit done, okay? We also have a billing agency out there that we are paying to bill people and presumably collect money to support our rescue association, okay? They're not performing very well, we have no idea why. Apparently, nobody's asked that question, all right? So let's say we have huge accounts unreceivable out there right now. When we accept these assets, which are undefined, first point, we have no accounting of those assets, we don't know what they are, when the town accepts these assets, are we accepting the accounts receivable also? Who knows? Because they're not defined, okay? Another possibility is, if we accept them, can we, if we accept the assets, can we go back and try and collect these account receivables, okay? If you take a check now from somebody that has done a service for you, and it doesn't match what you billed, you take it and deposit it, what happens? The court says, "You're done," okay? You've clinched the deal right there. Does Acton effectively do that, if we do this? If we accept these assets before we know what they are or what our options are in considering them? Let me move on a few more. The rescue billing company, has it acted in good faith? We don't know. Is there a contract with the billing company, and what services does it provide for? A billing company states the bills were not paid. Is this true? We don't know this, I don't think. Or have they, I shouldn't say skim, but I will say, again, there doesn't seem, there has been a lack of internal controls in the organization in recent years, which is unfortunate, but that's the way it is. So we're just moving ahead with it. But we need this accounting done, we need to know what the association has before we move forward on this, okay? We also can incur possibly some significant liabilities. Let's say our billing company decided to fraudulently bill Medicare or Medicaid in our name. We don't know anything about it, okay? Five years from now, Medicare or Medicaid does an audit, discovers this, all right? What's going to happen then? Is the town exposed? I don't know if the town's exposed, but Medicaid and Medicare usually get their money back. That's why it's so important that we do this, okay? And we do it before we accept these. We can accept them, but if we do accept them, we've got to put them in a fiduciary account and not touch them. and not touch them. And leave them in a fiduciary account until we know that they're clean. There are a whole bunch of other things, too, here, and I'll give you a paper with these concerns on it. But these things need to be addressed before we accept and change the ballgame. Okay? Having said that, unless anybody has a question... Nobody has a question. Thank you.
All right, I go.
Yeah. Come on up here.
Well, I actually have a question to him.
You can talk to him after the meeting. Because he's talking as a citizen, and that's his opinion, so...
Well, he can ask you, and then I can...
No. You're not here to answer questions.
Okay.
I can answer questions.
Okay. Anybody else? Come on up.
He brought his name. Short-term memory, sorry. He brought up a lot of valid points, stuff I didn't even think of. You know, I guess maybe what we should do is, before we finally do vote on this merger, is maybe have the Acton Ambulance Association come to a town meeting and let them lay their cards out all on the table, their assets and whatever else they have. You know, the billing, how is the billing going? The billing company they're using, you know, I don't know, unless you can answer that. I don't know, you're the... I'd like to see a member or the board or whatever, the Acton Ambulance Association, come to a town meeting before we vote on this. He brought up a lot of valid points, points I, you know, never even thought of. But I think it would be nice to have the Acton Ambulance Association here to represent themselves and just put their cards out all on the table. And maybe it'll give everybody peace of mind as far as their assets, the billing company and everything else. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Bill Catanze. I'm president of the Acton Ambulance Association. And we have brought many of these papers to the board and to the Warrant and Finance. We've got them here with us now that shows the billing company how it bills, what they bill, what's in arrears and how they go about it. We've got budgets for the last three years, so I don't know what else I can give you, but that's all what has been brought up. And we've been here for the last public meeting, as well as meeting with selectmen and Warrant Finance. And I'm more than willing to do it again.
Quick question for you, Bill.
Absolutely.
It was brought up that there's a problem with the billing company?
No, there's no problem with it. The billing company goes out and tries to bill the full amount. What they get back, if it is... If they get nothing back, they rebuild. If it comes back with a bad address, so they cannot obviously find these people, it winds up getting dropped. We were talking about that with them, is going beyond that and going to a collection agency, which gets 30% if they recover anything. And that's something we've got to talk about.
So there's really no... There's no problem with the billing company? They're doing their job?
Yep.
Now, that's the same...
Annual report, that's the one in Winterport.
Yeah. Is that the same one that Shapley's using?
I don't know who else is using it. I know there are other departments that use it because it's specifically for ambulance service.
Right. Right. And as far as the assets of the Ambulance Association, we're talking the building, which was valued at...
I've got it written down.
Two hundred thousand, I think, roughly. I'm trying to think of what it was on the tax rolls.
Yeah, I think it was $199, maybe, or something similar in that area.
The ambulance, which is roughly $10,000, give or take. The equipment in the ambulance, the defibrillator, the stretcher...
Stretcher.
Everything that comes with the ambulance, with an ambulance from... Okay, that you'd have?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. Okay. So we know, we get a pretty good idea what the assets are.
And I mean, we can give you, you know, right down to the nickel dime, because it's all available.
Yep. Go ahead. I'm thinking of my next question here. So...
Okay.
Do you have any pending lawsuits?
None that we've been notified about.
Okay. In essence, we're taking over the assets of the Acton Ambulance Association. With the... With this vote and with the passing of the budget, the Ambulance Association basically disappears. Is that correct? Because they're being disbanded?
Yep. We have notified the Attorney General. Where we're a private not-for-profit, we can't give our assets to the municipality without the Attorney General. So a letter was written by our lawyer, was passed in and passed by them. So upon the town accepting that, the association as it stands now will dissolve. Everything involved will go to the town.
All the assets will go to the town?
All the assets and equipment.
Right. Right. Basically, the company, as you will, will be gone.
Right.
Yeah. It's just like buying a company. You buy a hardware store, you're buying the hardware store and the stock.
Right.
Okay. Basically. There are a couple of attorneys. Your attorney, I believe, is working on this information now, and ours, I know, is working on it.
He already has and, you know, passed it to the Attorney General and told us that it had passed.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, as far as some of the questions goes, I think both attorneys now are working on it and done with it. So, you know, I think there's a lot of valid points there, but I think a lot of those points have been answered.
Correct.
I just wondered, as Tom mentioned, an audit. Is that something that we should consider as a town, just for... Just to satisfy some of us or to... For extra insurance, just to have it audited? Would it be that big of a deal to do? Does it cost a lot of money?
I don't have a problem. I don't know what it costs.
Yeah, I'd say the association would do that and foot the bill for it. As far as an audit, I think more so a complete list of assets.
Yep.
You know, so we actually know what we're getting. I mean, we know we're getting a building. We know we're getting an ambulance. But let's have it on paper. Let's have it spelled right out. Go through the ambulance, see what there is. You know, just things like that.
Yes, Tom?
I think I have to recognize the chairman.
Okay.
He's running the meeting. Or he has to recognize me.
Just come up here. You don't have to raise your hand to come up. Just wait in line.
And notice it's not a big line.
The assets are fine. We know how to account for those, we think. We don't know all of them yet. We haven't been provided on Warrant and Finance with that information. The other part of this is what the exposures are. Okay? And that is absolutely critical, knowing if the town, by incorporating this organization into it, also takes... Accepts the obligations in the future. Because if this corporation disappears, where is Medicare going to go? All right? That needs to be clear. It may need, we may need, if we can't get a clean audit, to take those funds, put them in a fiduciary account and leave them there for, what's the term? Until the statute of limitations expires on some of these obligations or possible obligations. But we need to know what they are, and we need to know how sound that is. That is a responsibility, the organization has to be done by them. The town cannot audit them because we cannot require past members or officers to provide sworn testimony, for instance. We don't have any business going in their books when they're a private corporation. But we do need to know this information, at least from my point of view on Warrant and Finance Committee, before I can make a recommendation that this is a good idea as it's currently structured.
Okay. Okay.
Common, I think?
Ed mentioned the attorneys. We've had the town attorney working with the attorney that's being paid for by the association throughout this process. And they will give us advice on this. We have brought the questions that Tom has brought forward to them because we heard them at the Warrant and Finance meeting. So we will get the answers on those questions. The money we're talking about is, Bill, about $20,000, is that correct? As far as how much money you're actually going to be turning over to the town?
It's a little more than that, I think.
Okay. But that's in your ambulance fund, correct?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah. So those are funds that they raised for an ambulance, to buy a new ambulance, from donations, right? Not from the operation or running the ambulance and charging insurance companies and everything. That was all from donations?
All fundraisers and donations.
Okay. All right. So we are looking into all of those questions, and the attorneys will, you know, make sure that all of this is done above board. And they actually wrote the question that's on the ballot, so...
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shane Hager. I'm a associate or affiliate member to the Acton Fire and Rescue. I'm also a 14-year veteran with the fire service. Then I've started out in small departments, small communities. I've worked in cities. I presently work full-time as an industrial firefighter, and I work part-time for the municipality of Kennybunk, Maine, as a firefighter EMT. I've worked hand-in-hand, side-by-side with these folks for a few years now, through a variety of calls. And this is something that's always been discussed, is getting staffing, combining and projecting ourselves into the future. The fire service, in the last 14 years that I've been a part of it and affiliated with it, one thing that I've learned in going to school for it, studying it and just being a part of it is the motto, "Do more with less." We are constantly tasked with new jobs, new taskings, new operations, and we're asked consistently to do more with less. We're doing more with less equipment. We're doing more with less personnel. And the biggest piece that the chief's driven home tonight, and I think a lot of you, I think have understood at least, is that we're trying to get ourselves to the scenes faster. We're trying to get more people to the scene quicker. And we're trying to get ourselves on scene and established so that we can either quickly attack that fire or get to the patient and start to provide emergency care faster than what we currently do now. The direction that we've gone tonight, I hope that you guys will take this information, not just go home with it, but go out to the community and start conversing and educating the other people that couldn't make it tonight or haven't been paying enough attention to what's going on and get them to understand that the direction that we want to go isn't about putting people on the station and having them wait, that they're going to be there, they're going to be working. They're going to be very, very busy people, I can tell you that now, working in a firehouse, that it's not just sitting around and playing cards, as the Hollywood movies depict, who are very busy between maintenance of equipment, maintenance, training, going out into the community and doing community-based programs and community services. A 12-hour shift can go like that. And then that's not even incorporating calls. So there's a lot on the plate. There's a lot riding here. I know there's concerns as well. And I commend the town and the selectmen and the departments for coming at this in a very cautious approach and researching and studying and trying to understand what's going to best help you, the citizens. Because at the end of the day, that's what the objective is. We're about serving you and making sure that you guys get the best possible product. And that's really what this is. You're a customer, we're a service. We want to make sure that, at the end of the day, you're happy with your service and that you get the best meal or the best deal for your dollar. So really, that's all I wanted to hit up on. If anyone has any questions on the fire service side, that, you know, ask them now and whatever else we can give you.
Anybody else?
Jack Rogan again. For those who don't know, I've been a firefighter for the city of Cambridge, Massachusetts for 31 years. I live here in the town of Acton. So I kind of have a... An idea about fire and EMS. And my only other last question, I promise, is if everything goes through, where would the money go? Would the money go towards the fire department budget, save for the ambulance calls? Or would it go into, like, a general account for the town?
We have to keep them separate for the first year because the ambulance is not part of the fire department. But they will come under the fire department. The fire chief will be in charge. And the money from then on will be one fire EMS budget every year. And the expenses will be spent, depending on the department. But within the fire EMS budget, you'll have a breakdown of how much goes to fire and how much goes to the ambulance.
I'm just, like, I'm concerned. I know the fire department doesn't charge for their services. That's part of your, well, whatever, the volunteer, the town taxes, whatever it's going to end up being. But I guess I'm saying, the money generated from the ambulance, would that go into the fire department budget or would that go into the town?
It'd be very similar to code enforcement downstairs. Any money generated that the town brings in goes into the general fund.
Okay.
Okay? From that point, it's dispersed out at town meeting, as to how the townsfolk want to do it. You know, the fire will put a fire rescue. At that time, it'll be fire rescue, one item. They'll put their budget together, and the funds will be pulled back out of the general fund, just as it is to run the town, the way it's done now in the other departments within the town.
Okay.
And you can, you know, however they structure it, you could have a line item for putting money away for a new ambulance, just like we have a truck fund right now, capital improvement for trucks, do one for ambulance. And it'll go... You've got to put it in the general fund of the town and then pull it back out for your individual accounts. So in essence, it will be going back to offset the budget.
All right. Great. Thank you.
That'll be the total budget, not the fire ambulance budget. And that'll be done at town meeting.
Paul Pointe. So right now, when we look at, I'm pretty sure it's like the annual town report, departments that may generate income, say, you know, license fees for dogs and boat registration, that kind of thing, shows up in there as an income line and presumably goes to the undesignated fund. I assume that this would be handled in the same way, so we can at least see what that flow of cash is?
Yeah, you definitely would have to have an income line for that, so you would see what it brought in every, you know, every year, just like code enforcement. As you say, code enforcement brings in dog registrations, whatever it may be. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Dick Nale, chairman of the Warrant Finance. I believe the paperwork that we have received so far from the administration up in Town Hall here shows that there was an estimated $32,000 anticipated revenue from calls. And I believe that is, in the paperwork that I have, shows that it's going to be applied towards taxes to help offset this fire department budget.
No.
The money that...
The $32,000 of estimated revenue from call.
Are you talking money that they have now, they're turning over, or money that they have coming in?
No.
Well, yeah, but all town money received has to go into the general fund and then dispersed back out at town meeting. So it's very...